I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kyle, do you care?
Yes. Precious Father, we just thank you for today, Father. Thank you for everyone that's here, God. I'm just praying to give us guidance and direct us in the decisions that we need to make, Father. Your precious name, you pray.
Okay, so all the made an order, established forum. Through November first, twenty twenty-one meeting agenda. First, my wife.
Thank you.
Second, my call, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carrier. Okay, the discussion of rezoning options.
Okay, so we have to make a decision as to whether or not we want to stay a seven-zone board or switch to five at large. And your first half is an email clarification with Lucas Harder at ASBA. We have Tamara Blocker here, out of court, telling any questions. And then Steve Zager, our school attorney, is on here with, there's any additional, one of the attorneys, any additional questions.
Hello, Steve.
Um. Might be best if I just kind of read through some highlighted points from this conversation, just to clarify and take the chime in. So, in an ASBA training a few weeks ago, it said that a board who opts to have five zoned and two at-large positions by drawing lots from existing board members or have these positions up for election. So there's been some confusion about if all seven had to rerun or just if their area changed in the census. And for us, all seven changed. Do you want to add anything? So that would have, that puts everybody up for reelection. Um. If, my next question to him was if we chose to do a five-zone with two at-large, I said, I want to confirm that we could go ahead and have two board members draw that could be at-large at the next meeting. Um. And to clarify how that would work, I said, do, if they are at-large, do they have to run anyway or can they be appointed by existing board members? And I reminded him that we currently have seven zones. Um, he responded and said, they don't have to be appointed. As individuals are selected by drawing a lot rather than by the board voting to appoint them. Uh, there's nothing by statute that would require currently appointed or individuals serving as a holdover from being included in the draw. Uh. So your individuals selected to continue at-large would participate in the drawing of lots for term length after the twenty-two election. Um. My next question to him was when would we need to have that done? And it would be by December second. So at our November meeting on the fifteenth is when that would be drawn, not drawn. Well, the seven we would draw from. Um, if we wanted to go that route of five zones with two at-large. Um. Then Tamara had her, had her read over our conversation. And she clarified with him the at-large positions, are they or are they not, for election. And he come back to say, if the board chooses to switch from a seven-member zoned board to a five-member zone with two at-large, the board draws lots to see which two existing members will serve in the at-large positions. Are those two at-large board members up for election in May? And then on that last page of this email conversation, he says, if the board chooses to switch from seven-zone to five-zone with two at-large positions, the law allows for the board to select by the drawing of lots the individuals to serve at-large from the existing board rather than having those individuals be up for election. The at-large members would be included in the drawing of lots after the May twenty twenty-two election term length to re-stagger the terms. And I was kind of redundant with my questions, but I wanted to clarify that process of how that would work. And I wanted y'all to have a good understanding too of what it would, what would be the difference. Um. You know, if you go to two at-large, those two positions are, when they are up, it's running against anybody in the county, correct?
That's correct. Your, your zoned positions would run by zone and only be voted on uh, in the people that live and reside in your zone. The at-large members would run countywide.
Could be next-door neighbors. One board member and then the next one, I mean, they could be next-door neighbors.
That's correct. It's just that the-
Like, if you have one of the, what do they call it, at-large and someone else's zone.
Well, even if they're both at-large. They could be next-door neighbors because they represent the whole county. So you get three next-door neighbors, one that's in the zone and two that are at-large that live right down the bay.
Same for you. Go ahead. You're, we can hear you.
The point just made, not all door neighbors. You could actually have three under the five plus two. You could have three members, um, living in the same zone theoretically. Um, and then the other four members then spread out amongst the geographic zones that you have. So, um, I just, when, I think that Danny, uh, Mr. President said you could have next-door neighbors. That's true. You could actually have three next-door neighbors theoretically. On a five-plus-two system.
Correct.
Tamara, do you have, um, a picture of our new zone?
Mm-hmm. No, I haven't done a whole lot of preliminary work on that just because the state, um, doesn't have their, their little boundaries drawn. You know, it's, I did start some preliminary work, but I don't really have anything.
So typically, how do our zones, I mean, I know where my zone is. But typically, does every zone have a little touch of town or?
No, no. This is kind of a current.
So there's kind of a town zone and then there's four or five more rural zones, five or six more rural zones, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's-
Yeah, I believe your current town is probably split between board members.
Yeah. Split between three.
Yeah. I think-
So it's, it's split between three?
Yes.
Everything's population-based.
Kyle, in order.
So town is the population concentration. So, you know, you really can't have one for town or there'd be too much, too much population for one zone.
I lived over at Serna and I moved up on Dover still, I didn't move zones.
Yeah.
Oh, that's how weird them in there are.
Yeah, Kyle shares part of it, Lenora shares part of it, and I share part of it. Um, but if you went to the, if you went to the five and two though, and that, then you're gonna have to go back. Then you're gonna have to re, you're gonna have to redraw the entire zone.
Yeah, and, and another issue that might arise is that if you don't draw for lots, if you choose to go that path and you don't draw for lots until November fifteenth, I'm not gonna really know who the incumbents are. And I know one of the redistricting criteria is to try to avoid pairing incumbent, incumbents against each other where possible.
Oh, yeah.
And we've got to have the map ready and approved by December second, not only by this board, but by the county election commission.
And what is it?
So on this, Tamara brought this hand out tonight. Um, this is a lot of legal.
Yeah, this is just kind of the criteria. The big criteria is your constitutional criteria, one person, one vote. And that demands that the population be balanced among the board members as substantially equal as possible. The courts have kind of allowed a deviation of five percent either way, but they really need to be as close as possible. And to be contiguous, you know, you don't have little islands, everything needs to be contiguous. And then there's statutory criteria, which is your Voting Rights Act, you know, and, and the, not doing anything that would deny a protective racial minority or ethnic minority, you know, if they're opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. Um, and of course, we've got some statutory criteria here because the school board here is over the ten percent minority population. And then there's just some traditional criteria down there at the bottom. Um, we want to maintain communities of interest to the greatest extent possible. Um, not, um, pairing incumbents against each other. Um, another thing, try to get the compactness to the district. And I know some of the areas are real big, but it's geographically, the population's the same as here in town or smaller. And another thing that we're trying to do, and this will save everyone money and time, is to try to kind of put the maps together where we're aligning the precincts, the JP districts, the State House districts, the school board zones, to the greatest extent possible.
Create your ballot.
Because, yeah, it decreases your ballot styles and that is saves money, it saves time for the city, for the school, for the county, for everyone.
Yeah.
It's less voter confusion, less poll worker confusion.
Okay, so say this, ten percent, you said that was a concern?
Um, we do, we do have to be mindful of the minority population because I believe the Huntsville School District is a little over fourteen percent, um, firm member.
Okay. So, and you may not know that, I mean, do we know, are those minorities within zones or are they, I mean, are we?
I have the current minority population here, um, that I can share with you. Um. It's kind of broke out by minority population, but it's like, I, this is what's currently, um, without the rezoning that's gonna take place, but where you currently are. And it looks like probably the greatest concentration of minority population is in zone three and zone four and zone six. So pretty much kind of here in town in the Huntsville area.
Okay. And so if we change zones, when it comes to that minority population, we can't, I don't. We can't split, I mean, we don't want to, what, what does that mean for you?
You just don't want to do anything that would-
Purposely splits.
Purposely, yeah. Um, deny them equal access to two candidate. Nor can you draw one specifically to include a minority group.
Okay.
So I have a question about the at-large positions. So say if you were to draw, you know, and you got like a one year. So in one year, there'd have to be another election? Is that how that works?
When, yes.
For the at-large position.
When we're on the positions. It's, so the at-large, what we would do, if we go that route at the next meeting, everybody's name would go in there. And I clarified this because I said, if we have somebody that we know is not planning on running, do we put them in? Everybody would go in and then if they're drawn, they can decline. Um, and then you would just draw until you had those two. Then you would know who your two are gonna be, but after the main election, everybody would draw for the, the staggering of terms. Does that make sense?
Oh, I get it now. And I, I had-
It's a clarification, right?
Yes.
Okay. So do they all have to be staggered like that, one, two, three, four, five?
Yes.
Because there's quite a few that were running all together at one point, you know, for a five-year term. So that's why you should know.
Well, the last time we had the census, we all ran.
That's just a lot of money.
True.
To have an election every year.
And we, we looked and in the past, the way it was set up was two members who had a five-year term, two members had a four-year term, and then one-
Three years.
Mm-hmm. So I drew up the resolution both ways. Either way, we got, I have a resolution ready, but I have the, the five and the four is the, I didn't like it in the store, they've been done.
So is this something we have to vote on every, every time we have a census, we have to re-vote on or re, remake a resolution?
Every ten years.
So I thought you've seen the history of this, like this, you've been through this before.
Well, I've taken it.
This is my favorite one.
It's been a lot of times.
You draw the lots and then it staggers out. I mean, what I see, you've got the five that's in a zone, so those election places in that zone.
Hang on just a second, Steve, and, and I'm gonna have you speak. Dwayne's explaining. Can you hear him?
I can't, but let him go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, the five that have the zones, the election would just be open to, to those particular areas. The two that's got the at-large, it'll be a countywide election.
Yes, everyone would vote on those two particular board.
So those two elections will cost more because you're opening up every polling spot. Countywide.
But since we run, since we do our school board elections with the, it's less of a concern now than it was ten years ago because we do our school board elections with the-
On the even number of years.
Right, so we-
But not on odd number of years.
That's right. Oh, thanks.
Yeah, the school would bear the burden of that cost on the even number of years.
Almost nine election years. What did you, okay, Steve, can you?
Okay, I can. So to, um, I think y'all answered the question without needing to hear from me, but every decennial census, uh, the board will go through this process. Um, you will, you will choose and you will redraw your, your districts. Um, and whether that is, um, of course, the legislature can change all this between now and then. Uh, like you, under front of law, the answer to your question is yes, you will redraw the, the lines every ten years.
So how many, how many zones represent part of the St. Paul district? Are there two, two?
There are two.
There's two folks that have-
One and two each have a portion of the lower south half of the county.
It's the way I'm gonna tear it.
So they, because that's another concern I have is to make sure that those folks in the south of the county feel represented. Because if we drew the, redrew the zone.
I will say this, the population has shifted north and west. And so if you decrease to five zones, that could minimize the representation in the south part of the county just because it's more sparse and-
And the west and the east part of the county.
Yeah, well, the east part of the county is Jasper for the most part, Jasper School District, so. But, um, yeah, you could potentially, I don't know without, you know, actually put the map together, but you could potentially minimize your representative.
I just think we're so large, we're such a geographically large district.
It's not like Fayetteville.
That, that we have different needs in different parts of the county and we want everyone to feel represented. I just feel like what's best for our district and for our county is to stick with the seven zones. That's my opinion. And I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm still, I still have my ears open, but that's, that's how I feel right now.
What's the easiest?
I feel the same. I think that-
That's really a board decision.
I'm just asking.
I'm just the demographer.
It's gonna-
Well, she'll have to rethink.
It affects you, so I don't know how that's gonna-
It, uh-
Or her stuff is easier. I'll say it.
Overall.
Thank you.
But you have to redraw regardless, right? You can redraw the seven.
I'll have to redraw.
And they'll be somewhat similar, but a little bit different. But you'll have to redraw them to five and they'll be a bunch different.
Oh, my gosh.
So I feel like that, I feel like that over, it's been seven zones for a long time. Every person that's on the board represents a area or-
A zone.
A zone that they interact with, which we all interact, everybody in the county, we're all, it doesn't matter. But at the same time, the people in that zone is able to go to their board member, talk to that board member.
Well, and I-
And it's gonna save, it's gonna save redrawing everything, plus it's gonna save money on those years that you just mentioned.
Well, and I don't want people that are not from my zone to feel like they can't come and interact with me by any means.
That's what I was saying.
But, well, I know, but, but I think it's important that, that as large as our county and diverse as our county and our district is, that we have more diverse representation. Because, you know, we can change it and it could very easily be three or four people from town and representing the whole county.
Well, maybe, I'm not looking at it right, but if you have a possibility of three neighbors living each other, how's that equal representation?
Well, two of those neighbors, the whole county would have voted on.
Good point. So, I mean, if somebody can explain that to me, so if the state's doing this for equal representation, how does that work if they all three live each other?
Well, the law just says you can do the five member, you can do the seven member. The five members would have to have, represent an equal amount of people. The other two would be elected countywide, so everybody would have a say in who those two members were.
What, what do you think the difference would be in a, the five zone in a school election where people just voted in their zone versus a countywide where you had to open up all the polls twice wise?
Oh goodness, I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight.
It's Oregon, but it takes a thousand hours.
We've, we've only been through one election cycle with the new equipment, so it would take me some time to, to calculate that. I wouldn't even venture a guess.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to use cost. I mean, um, I don't feel like we need to use cost as a design. I mean, I know that's important, but I don't think the cost of the election should be a deciding factor in this conversation. That's-
Well, if it's fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
You're saying twenty-five, yeah.
Two times. You know, forty, fifty thousand dollars, costs in school, taxpayers, whatever.
So if you draw for the two at-large positions, those people still have to run. They're just on like the general, the whole county ballot.
Right. They wouldn't run this time. It would be whatever they drew in the lots from then.
Okay.
So it could be anywhere from like five years, yeah.
Even if they're current, even if currently they're up for in two years.
Right.
Because we drew for ten years ago. It would change to whatever the new draw was. Just my understanding.
That's what I understand.
So what are you thinking after having these discussions?
I can see pros and cons of both. I really can. Um. We have historically been seven for ten years. Am I correct? I remember when it changed from five to seven.
We've been, we've been seven for twenty years.
Is it twenty? Okay, twenty years. So, so when we-
I've been through both of this.
So at one time we were five and two, you, you, no.
No.
You were just five.
We were at-large, when I first went to work in the Hunter Clark's office, everybody ran, there was zones, but you ran at-large because the minority threshold was less than ten percent. When it hit that ten percent threshold and after St. Paul annexed with Huntsville, that is when it became a seven-member zoned board and it's been that way since.
Ever see the lack come on?
So. I agree with what you're saying, the representation for seven. Um. Pro, cost. Um. Con. If everyone reruns, um, by doing the two at-large, there could be possibly more longevity of the board or it could change. Um, that, that I had thought about, but my gut says leave it alone at seven zones. But everyone does have to rerun, whereas if we go the route of five zones with two in large, two, two board members would still be on there regardless.
So say a board member didn't want to run and they got chosen for an at-large position, would that be redrawn?
I questioned that because I thought that could happen, that could decline.
Okay, and then you would just redraw without them.
Yeah.
You'd have to.
You'd have to.
And I also, I think I said this.
We wouldn't draw until the November, April, May.
Right.
Fifteenth. Okay, I guess it was November now.
But my question was, like, Terry's doing a holdover, so under normal circumstances, he wouldn't be able to run again. So I wanted to clarify how that would work, and if he were drawn and he wanted to run, he could under that guideline, but if he wanted to decline, he would just say, I decline, and we would draw the next person. I had questions for absolutely every scenario I could think of.
Well, unless, Tamatha, I mean, unless you have something else that you want to bring to light on the situation, I say, me personally anyway, I say we leave it at the seven zones and just like we've got it, it's like it's been for all these years, and just continue. That's my, that's my thoughts.
Along with the motion, delay it at seven years, just like it's been.
Seven zones.
I have a motion.
Agreed, second.
And I have a second, all in favor. Ah, motion carried. Thank you, Tamatha. Okay, that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, sorry. Resolution, sorry. Okay, you agree or you disagree?
Well, you go ahead, the, the first, the first one I have in here is the one for the seven. And then the second one was if y'all had chosen the five at large, so yes, you were on the right one.
Okay. Okay, whereas the board desires to continue with a seven-member board that complies with the statute and Federal Voting Rights Act nineteen sixty-five as amended. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the terms of the current board members will expire as of election of a new board on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and with the approval of the Mass County Board of Election Commissioners, the district will be divided into seven single-member zones that have substantially equal population with boundaries based on the twenty-twenty federal decennial census information and beginning with twenty-twenty-two school board election. The board will be comprised of members elected from the seven single-member zones and sorry, oh, a candidate for election from a single-member zone must be qualified lecturer and a resident of the zone. And each board member will be elected to serve a five-year term. And however, at the first meeting of the new board of directors, the members shall establish initial terms by lot so that to extent possible, an equal number of positions are filled with year and not more than two members. Terms expire each year, the members shall draw lots as follows, so that at the first meeting of the new board members, to ensure that an equal number of positions are filled each year, the members shall draw lots such that two members shall serve a five-year term, two members shall serve a four-year term, one member a three-year term, one member a two-year term, and one member a one-year term.
I have a question about that. Can we alter those lots so that they fall on the general election years? Do you understand what I'm asking?
He's saying no.
Okay, he's saying no, okay, sorry, I was, she's like. Did you understand what I was trying to say?
Probably.
It's because of you, it's because you have to, you have to stagger them out because you have an uneven, y'all have an uneven number of term. You couldn't do it that way.
Oh, that's right.
You have to modify your terms.
So mathematically, nope, okay, thanks.
Two, four, six.
Well, yeah, but, but then the two, four, six would turn into five-year terms that would be seven, nine, eleven, and so then all of them would fall on those wrong years, so that was a dumb idea. I'm great at asking questions that are dumb.
And I will tell you, the color coding is where Tamatha and I were going back and forth with questions and I had showed her where I had changed it because by statute, correct me, Steve and Tamatha, I'm wrong, we don't have to do four and five years, it can be any of the five years where you put two people. Does that make sense?
Sure.
But I just drew it up as it had been done in the past.
Basically, the law, the law just reads, and I've got it right here, at the first meeting of a new board of directors, the members shall establish initial terms by lot so that to the extent possible, an equal number of positions are filled each year and no more than two members' terms expire each year.
No more than two.
Yeah, so you could, you know, do that however you wanted, but it just, you can't have more than two coming off at one.
Gotcha. It's to establish stability or try to. Okay.
Do you have any more questions first, Steve?
No, sir, Steve, thank you very much, we appreciate you attending.
Thank you, it's your first president, members of the board, I'm gonna check it out, I'll just show you something else for.
Thanks, sir. Y'all have any other questions?
Make the motion, John.
We have to. Yeah.
Who's gonna sign?
Yeah.
Do we vote on this resolution?
He did when we finished the discussion, but we should, yeah, yeah, Dwayne and Kyle, he seconded, but now that we've read it, do you wanna?
Oh, no, if we have to vote again, that's fine, I just, yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so we, you're gonna sign, so we have to, we need to sign this before we adjourn.
The can.
You pass the can.
I never have a pen.
I'll fill one.
But each one of y'all signed.
It's in teacher's closet, these are already.
There you go, you got. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, right, you need to vote.
Very good.
Do you have any other copy?
Yeah, all of your copies are the same as the one I have, so we do another.
Signed it.
Laura, I think there's something in the locker for each two.
Hello.
To sign, yeah.
Yeah.
It looks crazy, the difference.
Lenora, I, you, you probably fixed it, I told you, you don't have a club.
Did.
It's okay, sign it.
Right there?
That's where it'll be, no grounds. That's okay, just how did we get it?
We're not up here.
No, no, just sign underneath Dwayne's.
Under Dwayne's.
Well, she did, she signed at both places.
She signed at both places.
Can you do the seal again?
Oh, she did, she signed.
She, she signed at both places.
Okay, you're good, okay, all right.
Okay.
No, it's not, it's under two. So we're good and ready to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, but Dwayne?
Second.
Second, about to kneel, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carried, make the adjourn. Any member can have water.